Good evening. This meeting is being audio and video recorded. It is showing on Channel 9, as well as it will be played again a couple of times this week. It will also be uploaded to YouTube. I have a statement that I would like to read. "Good evening. On behalf of the Board of Selectmen, Town Administrator, and the Town of Dayton, I would like to offer my sincerest and heartfelt condolences to the family, friends, and loved ones of fourteen-year-old Ryan Hazel, who was killed in a dog attack last week on Maple Swamp Road. Our town mourns this terrible tragedy with the town of Rehoboth and everyone at the Bristol Plymouth Regional Technical School. From all accounts, Ryan was a great kid with a very bright future ahead of him. To Ryan's parents and loved ones, we know there are no words that can help to ease the pain of your immense loss. Our community stands behind you, and we are available to assist you in any way possible during this difficult time. I would also like to say that I am thankful to the men and women of the Dayton Police Department, Fire Department, and our Animal Control Officer, who responded to this incident. Witnessing the aftermath of such a horrible and tragic event is not something that is found in any training manual or taught in a classroom. I commend them for their professionalism, and we are thankful to them for their service to our community." Will we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. First, agenda item. There's no public input? You can see that? Is there any public input? Okay, thank you. Item number four, discussion of donation of sick time.
Various employees have approached me requesting to donate sick time to the impacted employee of this event. And basically, I'm just looking for your blessing to go forward with that because it is multi-union. It's not all the same union, so it does need a, you know, technically, a vote of this board.
Entertaining motions.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to that the Board of Selectmen permit the donation of sick time, as explained by the Town Administrator this evening.
I'll second for discussion purposes.
Any discussion?
Yes. I think it's, I think it's magnanimous that employees want to donate their time. However, and I'm not sure if Dr. Z was on the board at the time, we had a situation previously with a town employee. It was not this kind of a loss, but it was an extremely traumatic experience. And the Board of Selectmen granted that individual administrative leave to give him time to, I'll say, recover from the experience. And I'm just wondering if the board should consider doing that, since we have done it in the past. And then, if more time's needed, that we look at the employee, employees' contribution.
Well, I'm supporting what the employees are willing to do to help a coworker, so I'm in favor of this motion that they be allowed to donate some, some of their time to assist this individual going through this terrible situation.
I second that, Mr. Chairman, that sentiment.
I have no objection to it. I just want this individual, this employee to be treated as fairly as the other one. And as I say, it was, I believe it was a month. And it gave him time to do what he had to do. But there was still that other option.
Can we, oh, I'm sorry. Can we explore that? If you do make this motion, we can obviously take, mix the sick time accruals there, or we can also explore the levy.
Yes, and we're meeting next week, so I think we'll have time to make a decision on that. Any further discussion on this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
What are we voting on?
We're voting on the motion to allow town employees to donate some of their sick time to cover this individual while he's out.
Will you accept a friendly motion that we do what the Town Administrator suggested, that we look into the town allowing paid administrative leave and the potential for employees to donate sick leave?
I'm not sure if that's what you were saying. I would like to vote on allowing these employees to give, be able to give sick time. I am clearly in favor of him having as much time as he needs to adjust to the situation, if he can ever adjust to it. So I'm still in favor of voting on this motion, and we can explore the possibility, if needed, to give him time.
Do you want a second motion after this one, Mr. Chairman, for that?
A second motion could be made, but we can vote on this. There's no further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
I'm going to abstain, excuse me.
Oppose, abstention, one abstention? The ayes have it. Is there a second motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion pursuant to the suggestion of the Town Administrator to explore the option of a paid administrative leave if necessary.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I would just add to that, and in combination with any donated time from employees.
That can be added. No further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions? The ayes have it. I believe item number five, we don't need to discuss. Is that correct?
No, we do need, I have an update for you, or, you know, something to tell you. So at this point, we don't have any information on whether or not we should be putting aside some time for a dangerousness hearing. We're waiting for the investigation to run its course. The homeowner has been fully cooperative in the investigation, so we may not need the hearing after all. I put this on the agenda just in anticipation of having some information, which I did not receive today for a variety of reasons. Nobody did anything wrong. But our council is aware of everything going on.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask the Town Administrator a question?
Sure.
Is, so, if I am understanding this correctly, whether or not we may need a hearing, a dangerousness hearing, will come from the results of the investigation from the district attorney?
Because the owner of the dogs may not contest. And if there's no contestation, then there's no need for hearing.
I understand. Thank you.
So do we need a motion to just table this?
Not at this time. This is just a discussion, and it'll be on a further agenda, future agenda, when there's more information. But again, I've been in discussion with council about this situation for all day.
Thank you, Madam Administrator.
Item number six, the vote on the recommendations for the annual town meeting.
Finance Committee made their recommendations. The packet you have tonight, thank you to Mrs. Brady, does have the updated figures of the budget based upon that discussion. Some major, I quote-unquote, highlights are that they are recommending the reduction of stipends for various boards and committees in town. They did not support the ADA coordinator position. They did support the library. That budget was different between the request and the selectmen's. They did support the library's request for that, so. That being said, the big stuff is the warrant. If you skip to page thirteen of the warrant, that's when they started to meet, that's when they voted on those articles.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask the Town Administrator a question regarding the stipends? I was at that meeting, but it wasn't entirely clear to me. I know which boards they took, I don't, that's the wrong phrase, they don't have the two percent stipend. Is Finance Committee one of those boards as well?
They, they actually did that at their first meeting, if I remember correctly, led with the fact that, yeah, they, they were not going to take the two percent. As far as their actual budget, I will have to look.
Yeah, my understanding is that the stipends on all of the, the boards and committees, they didn't get the two percent increase that they normally would have received in the past, including the Board of Selectmen. But they also reduced the stipends for all the committees by an additional eight percent. The Board of Selectmen stipends were not reduced because, as you're aware, we reduced it twenty-six hundred dollars at the annual town meeting last year. And prior to that, there was another reduction of approximately twenty-five hundred dollars in the stipends for the Board of Selectmen, so. But everybody, this time, they've asked that everybody's be reduced now. So we have to be conscious of the budget because we don't want to go over the levy. So we should be deciding, and we've made our recommendations already, but I wonder if we need to review our recommendations based on what the Finance Committee has decided. Should we be voting on each individual budget? The whole budget? The, the difference between the budget that we had recommended or the committees and boards and the departments had recommended and what the Finance Committee recommended, I believe there's a difference of one hundred and eight thousand and five hundred and one dollars and eighty-one cents. So they, they were looking at it, they wanted to, because they don't want to go over the limit, the levy limit, they, they reduced the budget. So we can, I'm not sure how you want to handle it. I'm not sure how we've handled in the past, but we can go over each individual budget, if you wish, and either keep with our prior recommendation or come over the new recommendation.
Can I make a suggestion, Mr. Chairman? Or more of a question, actually, not a suggestion. So is your proposal to do it budget by budget or to take that updated figure that FinCom recommends and act on that? Because what we acted on was a larger total sum
Right.
than what they recommended. So I just wanted clarification.
Yes, I mean, we can, we can go over all the individual budgets, if you wish, or we can act on their recommendations. Now, you were there for a fair amount, you know, the last meeting that they had, FinCon had. I was there almost to the end of the meeting, but I wasn't there for the whole meeting. So I have a, kind of I have an idea as to what they were looking for in the, in the situation at the time of the incident.
Is the FinCom number, if, if everything the FinCom recommends, is it, are we at the levy limit or under it?
Just under.
Thirty, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Madam Administrator. I spoke to the Finance Committee Chairman in total, not just the budgets, just total special articles, all that. We are thirty thousand dollars below the levy limit? And that's what, what I was informed. Is that accurate?
I believe that to be the case.
With those percentage decreases that you talked about?
With their recommendations.
The total decreases amount to about seven thousand dollars. For those stipend decreases, it's about seven thousand dollars.
Did the FinCom notify all those committees and boards?
I'm not sure about that, but they all were invited to that meeting.
Okay. Are there, I don't remember any particular budget up through page twelve. No, you said go to article three. All right, up through article twelve, through article twelve. I don't remember any that we really had strong feelings about. Am I, does anyone, I mean, articles, absolutely, we got to do articles, but...
One major difference in your budget was the ADA coordinator, and they just, they didn't support that. That's, that's a large expense. As far as that, I don't...
Regarding the ADA coordinator, their position was, is that, as you're aware, we'll be going for a grant to hire someone to do an assessment of all the town buildings, make sure that we eliminate the barriers and make them all ADA compliant. And that's going to happen, I believe, does it start in August, Town Administrator, that we apply for August first?
August first, or August second, I think, is the grant opening. Oh, no, the grant, the grant day.
Okay.
So their position, and I believe they have to make a decision by December. We got from that until the end of the fiscal year to expend that money if we're given a grant. So the FinCom's position was that we should wait to see the results of the assessment. Although I explained to them, we're not going to have the assessment by the October meeting. They said we can readdress this at the October special town meeting. See what we got in free cash, and that we can address it then. So they decided not to fund the ADA coordinator.
So they're just delaying it?
There's no guarantee they're going to support it in October.
No, but, but they said they'll consider it.
They will consider it. And they made it clear, because, you know, as you know, in the past, they've said that we can hear things in the special town meeting, then it wasn't brought up. But they indicated to me, I'm not sure if you were there at the time, Brett, when you talked about it, but they indicated that they would be willing to address this issue again.
Okay.
So unfortunately, unfortunately, I think we have to kind of take into consideration, you know, they looked at all the numbers. Probably should take into consideration their requests. Because I don't, I don't want to go over the levy myself, so.
Of course.
I don't think anybody here wants to do that.
But I think, Mr. Chairman, if you support the kind of bottom-line number from Finance, you, we would be supporting, and I'm not speaking for anybody, we would also be supporting, like, not having the ADA coordinator money in there. So it is a decision that I think the board, we should make going into the town meeting. Either way.
Yes, no, I, my fellow board members know my strong position that we should be funding an ADA coordinator, that we shouldn't be always reacting to situations, that we should be more proactive. I think the present ADA coordinator is going to be very active in, for us applying for the grant. It's a forty thousand dollar grant that more than covers the expense that we've budgeted for him. However, I think it's important that we stay within our limits, and that we don't go over the levy. Unfortunately, I have to take into consideration their recommendations.
Unfortunately.
And I, we should have a better idea at the special town meeting in October, our financial situation, and we may be able to do something there for the ADA coordinator, so.
I wasn't, obviously wasn't here for the, that FinCom meeting, but having dealt with this over the years as a member of the FinCom, we, we, we've had to defer a lot of stuff till the fall. And as long as the FinCom is saying, defer to the fall and we'll consider it, then I'm comfortable. If it were completely gone without a consideration, then I'd say we need to do something, so. At this point, it, so within the budget itself, that was the only major change?
I feel that, so the stipends were the big, so that's seven thousand. That's a major change, because that's an actual new budget request. And then the library, maybe smaller changes, but I think overall, most of your cuts were made in various lines, and the department requests were restored.
Did they leave, excuse me, go ahead.
I was just going to say, I do believe they went with your recommendation on the tax title foreclosure, which was just a few thousand dollars that you reduced that department request. I think they stuck with that one, but...
Did they support our position on the librarian, the library director?
Yes, in a sense, they increased it to her request, her original request. So her original request was fifty-nine thousand, and they supported that.
Okay.
She was asking for an eight-point-two percent increase, I believe, and we went with four-and-a-half percent increase. They asked me specifically what I think it was behind that, and although she's well with it, my position was that we do this in baby steps, but they decided to, and I told them, whatever they recommend, I'm comfortable with.
They went, they went with the eight?
They went with the eight, so I'm comfortable with that.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
I do just want to give a quick shout-out to the Finance Committee. I know we went in to the Finance Committee meeting, and I believe we were somewhere a couple hundred thousand above the levy limit. So when I heard that we had come out of that sort of final meeting, or one of the final meetings, thirty-eight thousand below the levy limit, you know, I think they did a good job. I think we did a good job as well. We have two different roles to play, but I am proud of the work that they did, knowing that tough decisions, you know, have, have to be made, and, and I think we all understand that.
And I think at one point, we were over four hundred thousand dollars above the levy.
When we started, you're right.
We started, and then they were checking into the ambulance fees that could help us, and what ended up happening was, was what we got before us here. So I think we're kind of on the same page as far as how we should handle this. So is there a motion that we support the FinCom's recommendations on Article one through twelve? Is that what you're looking for? Is that what we're looking for?
Wouldn't it be Article one through twelve? It would just be the budget, so it would be on Article...
I thought you said twelve.
If you were doing that, it would be Article three and Article four. Article three is the certain salaries.
Mr. Chairman, are you entertaining motions? I make a motion that the Board of Selectmen...
Support.
Support, thank you, looking for that word. The Finance Committee's recommendations pursuant specifically to Articles three and four of the annual town meeting warrant.
Second.
There was a second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, abstention, the ayes have it.
Article five is also related to the budget, but is the sewer enterprise, and I do not believe that is any different than what you originally recommended, but it might not be a bad idea if you want to vote on that one as well.
I don't know how the, the board feels. We don't necessarily, my position anyway, that have to go through each individual item. At least, I think in the past, we've said we, there's a motion to recommend seven, eight, nine, eleven, fifteen, whatever. And I'm not opposed to that. I reviewed the, the articles. I hope, I think everybody has too, so maybe we can do it that way, or if you want to go through them individually, I'm, I'm okay with that, too.
I think we did blocks for the special town meeting, even though that wasn't very long.
On Article five, I get a question. This is the, did the FinCom support Article five, the way it's written in the warrant?
I believe so, but I quickly spoke with Ed Schwartz and got the, jotted down the specific motions on the spending ones. But they put together a budget, and this would just be the numbers from that budget. So yes, I, I believe so, but I don't, I can't say that they took a vote on Article five and supported it. Does that make sense, what I'm saying?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion that we support Article five, the sewer enterprise budget, based on the Finance Committee recommendation.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, abstention, the ayes have it. Article six.
Mr. Chairman, may I make a motion for more than just Article six? Because I think there's some non-controversial kind of housekeeping articles coming up.
Selectman Goulart, are you okay with that, if he makes a motion?
Two.
To make more than one recommendation?
Oh, I didn't...
Not to go through each individual?
I know what he means. What I wanted to say was, because we talked about this. The last time I served on the FinCom, when we were getting ready to vote the budget, the financial things, I had made a recommendation. All right, so can we list these departments? Does anyone have a department they want to talk about? And if they said yes, we set that aside, so then we would vote the following departments into the... So then we went to town meeting, and when we did the budget, the moderator did something similar. So I think we can do this, if, if in your motion, Dr. Z, you say you want to make a motion to, whether it's approve or support or whatever, the following articles. And when we hear those articles, if we say, I want to talk about Article whatever, that way we can get through them quickly.
Yeah, absolutely. I was actually only going to do to Article...
Twelve, the housekeeping.
Twelve or thirteen, yeah. We'll do twelve for the sake of argument. Okay, Mr. Chairman, if you're still entertaining motions, I motion that the Board of Selectmen support, as prepared in the warrant for the annual town meeting, Article six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, and twelve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, abstention, the ayes have it. So it's Article thirteen.
It starts your CPC amounts?
Just as a general item to my colleagues, I have, I support thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, you know, without question.
Sixteen, are you...
Oh, yeah, I support. I was just going to do the CPC ones in a block.
Okay, that's fine.
So CPC is Article thirteen, all the way up to Article nineteen.
Oh, okay, I didn't realize.
I try to organize the one.
You did a good job, I'm sorry, I got confused. Do, Selectman Goulart, before I make a motion, do you have anything in particular you'd like to discuss between Articles thirteen and nineteen?
No.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the Board of Selectmen support Articles thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen, as prepared in the warrant for the annual town meeting this evening.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, abstention, the ayes have it. Article twenty.
I'm not going to make a motion, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to go with the Planning Board's decision to defer this article. So it's there, but I think they...
Oh, I didn't know that was the Planning Board's decision.
Yep, I'm, I'm sorry, Finance Committee, thank you. The, the copier for the public, so the public is aware, would be for the Planning Board. They had stated that they were going to defer this one, and I...
Right, defer to the fall meeting.
So I'm not going to make any motion on this one.
So there'll probably be no, no motion on Article twenty?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
It's definitely on there.
Article twenty-one.
This is the sewer study, to study the expansion of sewer services. You'll see that it's to be expended by the Board of Selectmen. That may have to be rewritten because the Finance Committee is requesting that sewer enterprise funds be utilized for that study. However, they will back up that it's free cash. I think all involved do believe that it's a necessary expenditure to discuss the economic vitality of our community and to develop a, a nice tax plan. So that, we might have to just take out to be expended by the Board of Selectmen. I wrote that when it was going to be free cash.
So we'll know before the annual town meeting?
Absolutely, because we have to post it. So I might just say, you know, a sum not to exceed seventy-five thousand to study, and then in the motion, we'll talk about who's expending it on town meeting floor.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that the, that we support the Finance Committee recommendation on Article twenty-one.
I will second that.
Whatever it is.
When they get back to us.
Whatever they decide.
Any, any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, abstention, the ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Administrator.
Article twenty-two, they've proposed to purchase the sixteen active shooter kits through the ambulance fund.
Is there a block here that we can do? A block of motions that you know that the FinCom supports?
I can run through them, actually, also. Ambulance fund for Article twenty-two, free cash for six thousand dollars for the purchase of new patrol rifles, raise and appropriate the police cruiser, which does, is already included in that figure under the levy, so that's made aware. And it should be a sum not to exceed, we have to just change that. Article twenty-five, regarding the animal control officer vehicle, that is deferred to the fall. And Article twenty-six is actually a sum not to exceed a hundred and forty-nine thousand. And this is for a six-wheel dump truck with sand or plow and related equipment. They want that out of capital stabilization, I'm sorry.
So we don't go too far, because I, I don't think we're going to act on Article twenty-five.
Okay, sure.
Why don't we do Article twenty-two through twenty-four?
Uh, Mr. Chairman...
If someone wants to make a motion, please.
Chairman, I will make a motion that we support the recommendation of the Finance Committee on Articles twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four.
Second.
Any, any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, the ayes have it. Article twenty-five, they're recommending that it be deferred to the fall, so we don't need to take any action on it. Article twenty-six, you were saying?
So he, I think he said a hundred and forty-nine thousand, period, so we need to just fix, we, meaning Karen and I, will fix that figure on the warrant, and that's coming out of capital stabilization.
Yeah, I was going to ask that.
So it's not raise or appropriate or transfer, it's to transfer from stabilization?
It's transfer from available funds.
Available funds.
What about the next one, twenty-seven?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't know you were going to stop.
I believe that's going to be deferred to the fall, isn't it?
Deferred to the fall.
Yeah, so one of them?
The pickup?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we support the Finance Committee recommendation on Article twenty-six, a hundred and forty-nine thousand from the capital stabilization account.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, the ayes have it. We're going to defer Article twenty-seven, Article twenty-eight.
Also deferred.
It's also deferred.
Article twenty-nine, Mills Lane. It is not a financial article, twenty-nine isn't, but it's related to Article thirty, and they recommended a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from free cash, so that's a change in the amount.
Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion that we support Article twenty-nine, because it's related to Article thirty, and we, and we support Article thirty as recommended by the FinCom.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, the ayes have it. Article thirty-one.
This is relative to drainage upgrades on Williams Streets, ten thousand dollars. The Finance Committee voted to defer this to the fall. And just a note, you can vote to take any of these off, they haven't been posted yet, so if you want to take anything off that we're deferring to the fall, you can. Just, just something...
I'm okay with it being on, just so that people are aware, residents in town are aware...
That we need it.
That, A, we do understand how important it is to be fiscally conservative, but B, we also understand the importance of these projects, and that they're on our radar. I don't know how my colleagues do.
Yeah, I'm okay with that. I thought you were going to start quoting Everett, Senator Everett Dixon.
You're waiting.
He wasn't born in the room, not when we decided. I agree. I, yeah, that's fine with me.
We can leave it on. Summary, the public can get up and make the motion.
Right.
But that's fine. Article thirty-two?
This is a tax exemption for veterans.
What exactly is the tax exemption?
I don't know exactly the amount, but it is based on...
But it gives them some kind of a tax break?
Right. It's based on income.
Yeah, okay.
And it gives them some relief. I believe you have to vote on this every year, but we're still looking into that, but it hasn't been voted on yet, so we're doing it now.
Sorry. Selectman Gulart, do you ever remember this article? Is this the first time we've ever seen this article? I support it, I just had never seen it before, so I was wondering if you've ever seen it.
Not worded this way. I know that we provide support to veterans. I know there are benefits for disabled veterans and their families, and I thought we provided for surviving spouses, but this may be, maybe there's some kind of a change in the law that by specifically mention in all these clauses, we cover everything. So, based on that, I would make a motion that we support Article thirty-two as written.
Second.
Any, any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, the ayes have it. Article thirty-three?
This is a proposed change, coming from the Board of Health. I'd like to be clear, it has nothing to do with the incident that occurred last week.
This was already...
This was already in the works, but it lessens the amount of dogs allowed in certain areas in town, and changes some definitions. If you'd like, I can go through all the, all the bylaw changes. The next one, the next couple are from the Planning Board. There are some errors, random errors, numerical errors, and also...
That we've made in the past.
That were made in the past, and so they're just cleaning that up, and some, also some changes to the site plan review bylaw. They have to have a public hearing before the town meeting, so if you have specific questions and interests in these bylaws, please do attend that hearing. The Planning Board holds that, it is advertised, and then they make a formal recommendation on town meeting floor.
Do we know when any of them, any of them are going to be held, hearings?
I think tomorrow night. I, I saw that there is a regularly scheduled Planning Board meeting tomorrow, uh, excuse me, it's Monday, Wednesday, the fifteenth of May, at 6:00 PM in the lower-level Planning Board office, and I believe, if I recall the agenda correctly, those are on there, these hearings, on the fifteenth of May.
Has the, does anybody know, has the Board of Health held any kind of a public info or hearing or anything on Article thirty-three?
I do not believe that they have.
Do we know if they're going to do it before town meeting?
It's a general bylaw, so it wouldn't be subject to a public hearing. I mean, it's nice to do, but I don't know if they've got that in the works. I can find out for you, certainly.
Thank you, Madam Administrator.
If, if not a required public hearing, maybe just announcement on informational hearing, since it is a zoning, since it is a town bylaw, let me put it that way.
That's the, well, we have the final article that is the, you know, to act on any other business.
Right.
And that is the end of the warrant.
Well, did we skip Article thirty-five?
Oh, did I miss it?
Yep.
Retreat lots and the spike...
Ground-mounted.
Oh, the solar array, so it's, and thirty-six is site plan review. All right, let me go in order. So thirty-three is the kennel that the Board of Health proposed, thirty-four is changes to the retreat lots zoning bylaw. Again, most of these are just errors found in the bylaw, numerical errors, things like that. Thirty-five is the ground-mounted solar photovoltaic insulation zoning bylaw, and thirty-six is the site plan review zoning bylaw.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask you a question about Article thirty-five?
Yep.
As you were on the zoning board for a couple of years.
As you were.
I was, I was, but I do think you are much more well-versed, especially in these bylaws. When the Planning Board proposes a change to zoning bylaws, or even just cleaning up language, does the zoning board get consulted at all?
Not, the seventeen years I was on the board, we were never consulted.
And I know that these are the large-scale ground-mounted, so those do go to the Planning Board, right?
Right, but they also address the smaller-scale ground-mounted, I remember seeing something in here regarding that, and it's more about the site and the furniture, and whether it can be covered or not, so I was comfortable with it.
Yeah, I have no issues with the bylaw articles.
I don't either, I review them all. Can we, do you feel comfortable making a motion that we recommend these?
As prepared?
Me? Is it, I...
No, I'm looking at you, but I'm talking to Brett.
I guess my question is...
My recommendation is always to defer to the voters on bylaws, but unless you are putting, you as a board are putting one. I would support the kennel bylaw. I don't know too much about the zoning ones to make a formal decision tonight, but I do support the, the changes in the definitions to the kennel bylaw.
But we always defer to the residents. They have the final say in it, but we can make a recommendation where our position is.
Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion on Article thirty-three, thirty-four, and thirty-five, and thirty-six, that the Board of Selectmen support sending these to the voters for approval.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, the ayes have it.
I'm not opposed to anything there, but I'm, I, you know...
Well, the public hearing hasn't occurred yet. I mean, there's a little unknown. I wouldn't make a stand.
Right, just send them on to them.
And we have a right on the floor to speak for or against any of these, any of these articles.
May I make a general comment before we move on, Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
There, there have been, if I recall correctly, the marijuana bylaw came back twice to the voters because of language changes, and there are several bylaw articles on here where errors were found, so I would ask whoever is in charge of these articles to please double-check your work before the articles come, because we now have people voting on the same articles they had, they had already approved.
Yeah.
So they're going to ask why, and our answer is, we made a mistake, so...
It's going to be their answer, right?
Well, their, yes, correct, correct. I'm just, I'm being diplomatic.
You're being generous.
So, if we could get that together, specifically Planning Board, before we put articles...
I mean, some of these are older bylaws, and it's not only coming to the voters because of numerical change. There are some other changes. I don't want to make it sound like we're just rectifying something. It's, the site plan review one has some changes.
I understand. Thank you, Madam Administrator.
I have, I have a historical question, so this, this will go to the chairman.
Historical or...
He's ready.
No, not historical, as in historical society or commission.
Oh, oh, oh.
Historical question, because you were on the board for so long. Do you know if when a bylaw is drafted and they're going to eventually send it on for a town meeting approval, does their legal counsel review it to make sure it's...
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Did I even see a question?
And we would hope so, if not.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you for answering that.
I just asked because of the changes, the, whatever.
Articles, agenda item number seven, vote on recommendations for the special town meeting warrant, there are seven.
So there aren't any really monetary, there's no spending articles here, this is more of the, we're cleaning up.
Some of the wording, the others.
However, based upon some comments made by Selectman Gulart at our last meeting concerning the fifteen fifty-one Somerset Avenue property, I am actually requesting that you vote to remove the current Article six. In some other discussions with other town officials, I think it is in our best interest right now to hold on to the property until we can figure out how to properly dispose of it, and there's no need to rush. It's not like we have to get out of it. So I'm requesting that you remove Article six, which is proposing to demolish the building at fifteen fifty-one Somerset Avenue.
Entertaining motions?
Before I make a motion, Mr. Chairman, Madam Administrator, the way that you phrase that, does, and I'm asking because I don't know, does, did the town claim this property via like lien or something?
Oh, no, no, there's nothing like that, that's wrong.
Okay.
Oh, no, no, we just need a little bit more time to figure some things out. There's no money, no money attached to it, and so there is a disposal fee, there's also some other things going on there. And as Selectman Gulart said, we can use it for storage at this time.
This is the old police station.
This is the police station.
Sorry, what did you think, guys?
I was thinking this way.
Oh, no, no, this is the old police station, so there's no rush to get out of it, is what I mean, so we can just...
I understand.
Wait until we make some better decisions.
When are we going to get the next insurance bill for that, then? Is it July?
July one.
July one, so if we don't destroy, we're paying...
We're paying in a flood plane, but...
One of the things that I asked about was whether or not we had to have flood insurance, and if we don't, don't insure it. And if, I would think the one thing we need to have, excuse me, two things, is absolutely, positively, extremely low amount on the building, only because we want to ensure the contents, because the contents that will be in that building are worth a lot of money.
So, and that's what he said. He said you'd want something, not on the building, you'd want something on the property so that your vehicles and anything stored in there would be insured. But what you do is you just itemize out the value of what's inside, the building can be zero. We wouldn't want to save the building anyway.
And where the, and where we have recreational facilities, we've already got liability on it, and that's not going to go away.
Right, it's just one more year.
Yeah, so we're paying more, though, because it's in a flood zone to ensure the items that are going to be in the building.
No, because if...
Too many questions.
The flood insurance, do we absolutely have to have that?
No, however, it's a good idea to have insurance on that property, which would make it be in flood insurance, because we are intending to store large purchases in there. Also, our, our, I haven't seen the numbers yet, but I've been told verbally that it's very even compared to last year, and that's in absorbing a full, full-time use of Old Town Hall and the new police station.
Really?
So, we got some good competitive rates there. And then, I, I think, I really feel strongly we should do this. I know that we're paying flood insurance, we would end up paying anyway, and we can lessen the amount once we have everything in a row.
The other comment I'll make is that what's going to be stored in there is going to be mobile. So, if we get a hurricane or a flood tide and Mr. Ferry...
That was my case of good warning.
He, he monitors the tides like clockwork, and if we had to, we just move it out of there to high ground.
I will reluctantly support it, so if you want to make a motion.
I'm going to make a motion on two through five, that, excuse me, who actually requested all these changes, from various boards, or...
What do you mean, on this, all these articles?
Two to five, all these adjustments.
Okay, let's see. Two and three are related, so that's me, because our legal advice said we should go one way, and DOR didn't like it, so we're changing that.
Okay.
Article four is related to what we should do, what DOR want, okay, so two and three is what legal advice, what happened in March, we need to change that, so we rescind those two, and then do four and five, which is what DOR, or, excuse me, four, which is what DOR is recommending us to do. Article five is regarding what we had specified at town meeting where the twenty-five thousand dollars would come from, we specified the address, but we went and looked at that, and it made more financial sense to do what we're doing, so we have to fix that.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we support Articles two through five as written on the warrant.
Is there a second? Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, no abstentions, the ayes have it.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the recommendation of the town administrator and remove Article six from the warrant at this time.
Is there a second?
Second for discussion.
Any discussion?
I'm going to abstain from this. That was my discussion, sorry.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions?
What do you say for abstention? Yay?
Abstain.
Abstain.
I abstain.
I abstain. Been a long day.
The ayes have it.
Thank you.
So it will be removed. Article seven?
Article seven is another, this is coming on at the request of the town accountant, because the way the wording for the article was submitted had us accepting two hundred and seven thousand dollars, which is actually not the process that's happening, so we got to get rid of that and then revote, so that's seven and eight.
Okay, so...
Relative to the agricultural preservation restriction placed on nineteen ninety-six Elm Street.
Okay, so Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion that we support the wording of Articles seven and eight as written in the warrant.
Is there a second? Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, the ayes have it. Article nine?
Back in October of two thousand and sixteen, the town authorized, the town of Titan, to bother, borrow, excuse me, a sum of money, and we didn't need all that, which is happy news, so now we're cleaning up our books and taking away some of that vote to, or that authorization, some of the funding.
So people heard that right, we needed less than what was approved.
And we came in under budget.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we support Article nine as written.
Is there a second?
Second. Don't mean to beat me, I'm sorry.
So, what was the final number?
I'm sorry, I do not have that in front of me.
Okay.
The final number we spent on, so you had a series of different votes on the police station, so I'm not exactly sure about all of those, but the final cost of the police station, including those free cash transfers, were somewhere around like five point nine million dollars.
Okay.
But I can't, I don't remember all of the different votes.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, the ayes have it. Reading of the warrants. I personally don't feel that we need to read all the warrants, they're going to be, all the townspeople will be notified.
They're mailed to them, yeah.
They're mailed to their home.
And that's, Mr. Chairman, if I may... And that's, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I feel the same way. I like to read when we have, like, a, and we've only had one since I've been here, like, a quote-unquote "random" special meeting, like the one we had in March, which we needed to have. I feel strongly we read those, because those are not mailed. This one is mailed, so I think everyone that wants to read it is going to get a copy. So I'm okay with dispensing the reading of the special and the annual. Is the special also sent as well?
Actually, I don't know, but we can easily do that. If it needs to be, we can, right?
Is it in the front of it, Karen?
It's not usually, the special is not usually sent, but we can definitely do it because we're mailing up.
Is that okay? All right.
Yeah, I don't see a need to read it, because it's gonna be mailed to every household. And hopefully, people will read it, and hopefully, they'll come to town meeting.
So do we need a motion not to read it?
Sure. Yep.
Or should we do?
Yep.
Entertained.
Mr. Chairman, I will happily make a motion that we dispense with the reading of the special and the annual town meeting warrants, as they will be mailed to every household.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstentions? The ayes have it. Agenda item number nine, I had to sign an executive order last week. Apparently, the, a woman was hired for the council, the council on aging, and the council on agent voted to hire this person, but it was not brought to the attention of the Board of Selectmen, and she had already begun working for the council on aging. So I signed an executive order allowing her to remain as an employee, but to have it be brought back to the Board to take a formal vote on it.
Mr. Chairman.
You have a copy of the executive, you have a copy of the executive order, if you want. I will read it. Executive order by the, executive order, the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, Kenneth Pacheco, with the permission of the members of the Board of Selectmen, accepted and approved the recommendation of the council on agent to hire Linda Pinto as an employee of prime time working, nineteen and a half hours per week, at the rate of $12 per hour effective May 6, 2019. Please be advised that this is a one-time executive order. It is not the practice of the Board of Selectmen to issue executive orders on personal matters. Board of Selectmen, Kenneth Pacheco. I did speak to the council on agent and indicated to them that I would not be doing this again. This is the, I believe, the second time that this has happened, that someone's been hired.
With the council on aging, or another department?
With the council on aging, and without our okay, and that person already started working. I believe it was an executive order. I wasn't here at that time when that happened. But I won't be doing it again. I'm not sure how the Board feels about me doing it again, but I, I just think we have to, that has to be the proper way to do this. And this person had already started. I kind of felt bad, and this person would have lost a couple weeks of pay waiting for us to actually have our meeting, which actually was, was gonna be the 22nd, but we have the special meeting tonight. So entertaining motions.
Before I make a motion, and I'm happy to do so, Mr. Chairman, I have a procedural question. Let's say we didn't have a gracious, nice chairman, and we had an ogre who didn't approve it.
You're not an ogre.
What would?
She cannot work, well, she come in, but she won't be paid. She's not authorized to work.
But if, but if that wasn't brought to our attention until, let's say, a week later, are, is the town liable, I guess?
No, the town is not liable. She would be working, I mean, she wouldn't have, she wasn't onboarded correctly, so she didn't file, fill out paperwork. You know, there's things that happen when you get a new job, right? You fill out all this stuff. So that didn't happen. And, no, the town is not liable. I mean, if you have to pay for hours worked, but if she wasn't ever appointed, you know, you figure out what you need to do, you pay for the hours' work, but if she wasn't appointed, she just needed to keep that post.
I understand. So I guess what I'm asking is, was the chairman's hands are not bound by the fact that the individual started working before there was approval?
Correct.
Okay. I understand.
It's my understanding that if I didn't sign the executive order, if I'm correct, she would have had to stop working. But in some way, she would be entitled to those hours that she worked. I would think that.
Only what she put in.
What she put in. But if I had, say it was Wednesday morning, she was there, she would have had to, and I didn't sign it, she would have had to leave. She would not get, be working, well, she did voluntarily, until the Board actually appointed her. But she would, I think she would be entitled to those couple of days that she had worked. But I
Which makes sense.
It was, she would have not worked for a couple of weeks, loss of pay. Alice definitely needed her, so I, I signed it, but I would like the approval of the other Board members.
I can tell you what happened before. It wasn't approved through an executive order. What happened was they hired somebody without notifying the Board. Then they brought it to the Board. So yes, there was a person working, and had the Board not appointed her retroactively, she'd have been paid for the hours' work. She would not be allowed to work and volunteer. But the big issue was, had she been injured during that time period before the Board voted, it would have been a mess between liability and workers' comp.
I think that's what I was trying to get at.
Exactly. So that's why. She wouldn't have been covered.
There was no question about the person who was hired, or it was, the procedure was not followed, and in effect, the town was in a, was in jeopardy until, and we didn't have a special meeting or anything, it just came up. And when it came up, it was like, "She's been working how long?" But that, that's what it was.
I'm just concerned, as the Board that oversees this department and the other departments in the town, that we, our hands not be bound by a decision that was made by a Board that we oversee without our oversight, essentially. So that was my concern.
Maybe they should look into having a substitute policy, since it's, this is the second time it's happened, and when this happens, it's like, "We need somebody right away."
I think it would be perfect if we had an active, working Senior Jack's Work Off program, because that's the perfect environment for that. And that's one of her goals, and she should do it, in my opinion.
And if you had a list of those people, like I said, like teachers, like the school has a substitute teachers.
Exactly. You call them up, and you can schedule them. Yep.
And they can come in, they're all covered, there's, you know, the liability and all that other stuff. They get paid, whatever. But I agree with the chairman that we also don't want a situation, again, where a, someone who's hired as a permanent employee comes in.
I think it was made clear that it was a big no-no, and that it was Selectman Pacheco's decision whether or not to allow that to occur or not. And, yes, it should not ever happen.
I'm sorry.
To Mrs. Goulart's point, the person
Will you identify yourself?
I'm sorry, they had 7:58. To Mrs. Goulart's point, if that individual didn't get hurt, you know, he would be in a position. Where this has happened twice with Council of Aging, I'm not sure, is the person who made this hire, is this person the same person who's done it twice? Or was it a different head of that Council of Aging that hired again?
Same.
It's the same.
Same person.
Well, it's actually, the appointment was made by a Board. The recommendation would have been made by the same person, but the Board would have made the vote, taken the vote to hire the person, and then they sent it on to us.
So then the Board was different at the time when it happened before?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I was, you know, just, I was reluctant to do this, and that was my position when I, before I talked to her, I talked to our town administrator, indicated to her that I may not be supporting this. This particular person here has worked for the Council on Agent in the past, funded by, I believe, Citizens for Citizens. So Alice was aware of who this person was and the quality of her work. And we were talking minimum wage, so we're not talking a lot of money. But I believe, once I, I signed the executive order, she's covered on the workers' comp and all that kind of stuff, if something should happen.
Yeah, she filed, and the paperwork is filed in the system.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
Are you accepting motions?
Yes, I am.
I make a motion that we ratify the executive order of May 8, 2019, as written this evening.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in, did I see you yawn? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions? The ayes have it. Public input?
I do have, play a fun song title on both sides.
Would you, come on, only because I'm told that the public
They can't hear.
Can't hear it, so.
So I'm not sure if this question is even appropriate here, but I'm gonna ask it. I have been in, I have been in discussion with Mallory about the parking lot situation at Dayton Elementary School. I have been in contact with Dr. Azar. I was at the last school committee meeting to review the building study. I believe Selectman Goulart and you were in attendance then. I don't know if you were there. When I did ask him, what the plan was.
I was there when you were, I think it was budget, I think we were both there the night that they discussed the budget, and I believe you got up and spoke about the parking.
About the parking lot.
Was it me or you?
I think you both were there.
Were all three of us there?
No.
No, I don't believe you. It was the building study, the, I believe, no, I'm sorry, it was, that was before that.
It was the budget.
It was.
The hearing?
The budget, they gave us all the paperwork.
It was at the high school auditorium.
Right.
Oh, the budget hearing. All right, okay.
You were there.
Okay.
So for capital improvements, all of that. So I had gone up and I had asked Dr. Azar my concerns about the parking lot situation. Now that pre-K has been moved over, we have rolling drop-off at 9 o'clock, which coincides now with drop-off for pre-K. Sure, I don't know if any of you have been there, but
It's madness.
It's madness. Dr. Azar had informed me that he has monthly meetings with you, that this has been in discussion. I had then emailed you the next day to get feedback about that, to which you've graciously been diligent enough to get back to me with. My issue is, I know it's not gonna happen overnight, but nothing is in the works. There's no motion, obviously, on this warrant to raise, or if we need to raise an appropriate, to make this parking lot bigger. For school year starting September, it's gonna be more of the same. I was in Mrs. Dessert and Mrs. Fulon's office last Thursday. I, I can't say enough about what the faculty there is doing to keep our kids safe. However, people are blowing through stop signs, blowing by buses, weaving around cones, pulling out of parking lot where traffic is one-way at that point. There were cones put up. I mean, our vice-principal and principal are not traffic cops. They're not crossing guards. They did, on occasion, have a police officer there here and there, and I will tell you that, yeah, law enforcement works. People actually behave. Adults actually can behave and drive properly when there is a police officer there. There is too much, it's, it's just not working, and that's my opinion. I wish that, you know, all of the drop-off moms and dads were here right now to back me up on this. Since pre-K has been moved, again, that was another one of my concerns. I think it's great that we moved the pre-K program, but did we plan for it? Did we plan for the traffic? Did we plan for the space resource at the parking lot? I want something to be done before school year starts in September. I don't think that's a lot to ask. I don't know how to make that happen. Do we have parents volunteer? Do we get a crossing guard? Can we get a police officer? I mean, I watch our aides almost get hit by cars that are blowing through stop signs to, you know, to make sure someone gets their kid to school in the door, you know, five minutes out. They are also going around school buses. And again, I was in Mrs. Dessert's office last week. They are frustrated. They are concerned. They're doing the best that they can, but it's more of the same.
May I, have you said exactly what you're saying tonight to the school committee?
Yes.
And their response is?
Well, I was present.
You were there.
I was present when this happened, and Dr. Azar actually said that he spent a day there observing all of this.
It is in the Nezdek building study that the parking lot is a problem.
What has been done about it?
Well, I received Mrs. Quinn's email, and I responded to her nine times out of ten. Jim Agia and Tom Ferry have a plan about, just about every problem in this town. Sure enough, they have, they have a plan. I, I like the plan. The plan requires some permitting, which is sort of annoying, but it just is what it is, and it's a good, solid plan. I indicated this plan to the school department officials, and I was told that once the Nezdek thing and the budget thing were going through, they would be working on this. I, I don't mean to kind of shirk you off. I agree. I think it's madness. I think we need to do something. But the Town of Dayton Board of Selectmen cannot fix every problem, and the school committee does need to step up on this. And they need to tell their employees that they want to have an appropriate drop-off line for the Dayton Elementary and the Dayton Middle Schools and get it done. We have a plan.
Well, can we, can we be put on their agenda after the whole budget? I, I get the whole thing with the budget.
Yeah, and I know this is probably not the best timing, but when is the best timing?
Right. Well, I think after, after the budget is settled and before September, I think we should be, we should ask that the Board of Selectmen be put on their agenda.
To Mrs. Quinn's point, this is, this is not a no-cost option. There's costs involved here. The school committee knew of the deadline for town meeting, and they didn't put anything in.
Well, I, may I, first of all, I think the reason that they didn't put anything in is because they're fighting just to get the budget approved. So I understand that. They have other issues to confront first as to
Absolutely.
Whether or not can we even edu, do we have the funds to educate the children and, and the teachers to pay them? Okay, that's issue one. Issue two, we purchased, Selectman Goulart, you were a selectman at the time, I believe. I was not, but I understand that there is a, there was a purchase of a piece of property over there. I'm sure when the time comes to reroute the traffic in the parking lot, that would be part of the plan. To your point, Selectman Pacheco, I do think that we should send perhaps a letter to the school committee and to Dr. Azar, so that this, they understand that this is on our radar. We understand the concerns of the residents. You are not the first person who has brought the issue of the parking lot situation. In fact, when I went to do a tour of the modulators, which the assistant principal of the elementary school gave to me, that issue was raised in, in the office in there, in central office at the elementary school. So this is on their radar. I think the school committee needs to understand the importance of it, because, again, they are elected officials who are not at the elementary school every day. They may not understand the real pressing issue that it is. And so I'm okay with sending a letter. Maybe in this letter, we request to be on the school committee's agenda, but I think the school committee should also know that this is on our radar from the town's perspective as well. And in that way, they understand that they're not on an island by themselves advocating for this. So I will support that, if that is where the Board decides to take this conversation.
What I remember about this, yes, it was, I wrote the date, it was March 26. I remember I sat behind you, so we wouldn't be a quorum. When this came up, I spoke to, I believe, Mr. Agia and Mr. Ferry. And this, this plan, first of all, to address what Dr. Z said, yes, we bought that little parcel of land that was a house lot from the Novitiate, the Dominican Sisters. And the intent was we could use it for parking or expansion or whatever, but it abutted the property, so we bought it. Town meeting approved it. So more recently, because of what you're talking about, part of the plan includes a second exit from the middle school on a, that will take them out to Center Street, not where that driveway is. So I did speak to Mr. Agia and Mr. Ferry, and one of the things they said was, yes, that was part of the plan, and yes, we were gonna move ahead with it, until the modulators were coming. And then what they had to do was our highway department built, I'll call it a gravel, gravel-packed road around those buildings, because when we toured it, I looked out and saw this gravel-packed, it's not a road, but it's like a big driver.
With a modular there, the turnaround, that would be the pre-K drop-off.
No, no, I mean, it goes around the back of the building.
To get out to Somerset Ave?
No, no.
Oh, it's for emergency access.
You have to have the, it had to be heavily packed gravel to handle the weight of a fire truck.
Okay.
And, excuse me. So they put this other one on, and then they focused on that, because they had to provide the emergency access. Because the night we did the tour, we went to the building, I remember looking out the window, and I said, "Oh, who built that?" I called it a driveway. And they said the highway had to do, the highway department had to do that in order for a real heavy fire truck to get in there in an emergency. So, and I'm not making any excuses. We all know the need. We know the plan. But the reason why it didn't move forward back then was, let's face it, initially, the modulators came quickly, and so they responded accordingly. And I think they put that driveway in, in cold weather. I'm gonna think in the wintertime.
Yeah, it was done in January.
So, so, yeah, I certainly understand.
My only question is, like, obviously, this is gonna go back, it's not gonna make it to this meeting, if it even finally gets to a meeting. What are our options safety-wise? Like, can we get an officer? I hate to even ask that, but you know what? It is a safety concern for many parents of children that are crossing It is a safety concern for many parents of children that are crossing that street. I mean, I've witnessed our vice principal go like this, and a car just blow right by a crosswalk with kids and parents, you're grabbing your children. Is it possible, if we can't get this on, you know, a, a special town meeting, to, to improve this parking lot, if it takes another year? Can we get a safety officer at pickup? It's not so much drop-off, because we have rolling car drop-off, where, you know, we have an orderly line, and that seems to be working well. It's pickup, when you have middle school kids that are being picked up after school, later, some stay after school, so you have that traffic. We have bus traffic going in one-way, but all of the traffic coming in is right off of Center Street. Buses go left, parents go right, but that entryway to that parking lot is an exit and entry. So people are double parking into that entryway. So if you have someone double parking in an illegal spot, you have to sit there and wait while children and people are going around that. Now, do I think that would happen if there was a police officer there? Absolutely not.
Mrs. Quinn.
And it's embarrassing that we have to do this with adults, but this is what's happening over there. You know, I park at the middle school and walk with my three-year-old to go get my, my child, where the middle school parking lot is empty, that all those teachers have left, and I walk through the fields, but you have people that are, I mean, since they put up cones, they're not parking now on both sides of that access street from DES to DMS, but they're still parking on one side of it. What if there was a fire? And I know our fire chief is down there doing diligent work, trying to get some order, but it is a problem, and I don't want to see it continue next year. We had a great winter, we didn't have a lot of snow. What happens next winter when we get slammed with snow and we have snowbanks and less parking spots? And again, does this fall on me asking the school committee to get a safety officer? I'm just kind of at my wit's end.
I just wanted to ask, how long would this period theoretically be? How long does pickup last?
Pickup is 3:15, school is out at 3:15. Parents start to line up at the door at three o'clock, the back gymnasium door there. I believe that pre-K pickup is 2:30, so all that traffic is at least gone. But you have the middle school buses leaving at 2:15 then, 'cause they leave an hour before, then they come back to pick up between three and 3:15, to then they leave. But then we have, you know, you have faculty leaving, you have some faculty that are leaving later at the middle school, and children, parents are still picking up middle school children, and there are a lot of pickups and drop-offs.
Is this only for Dayton Elementary?
Yes.
'Cause Dayton Middle goes, like, up to the door.
I'm not sure, yeah, and I think Dayton Middle, obviously, might be rolling pickup, because those kids are old enough.
And they go, like, right to the, they move around.
They do go right up to the main entrance, but again, it's just a turnaround and loop, and then when you have cars parked on the right side of that access road, and you've got kids weaving out in front, like, you know, I have a three-year-old, he gets away from me sometimes, he runs out, I know. Is it going to take a child or a parent getting hurt for us to step in here?
I'm wondering if it's possible to have a cruiser there.
That's what I'm, that's why I asked how long.
'Cause what I'm thinking of.
It's probably only an hour or two.
Three to 3:30, I'd say.
Well, the other thing, not only is there a problem with pedestrians, if there is an emergency at that time, and all those people are clogging things, how do you get a fire truck or an ambulance?
Correct.
And what I'm, what I'm visualizing is, in Mansfield, and it only happens at rush-hour trains, and it only happens in the afternoon, but the outbound parking lot, 'cause they don't do it, when I say outbound, the way the tracks are, there's parking on the inbound side, and there's parking on the outbound side. And the outbound side is much bigger, because you get off the train, 'cause it's headed to Providence, and you're right at your parking lot. Now, Mansfield has an officer on 106, where those parking lots outbound, empty, and that officer is only there for a short period of time. I'll bet it's less than 30 minutes, maybe 20 minutes. And that officer is there, and he gets all that traffic moving, and they're out of there, because the problem was, they would get stuck on those back roads trying to get to 106, and if there were an emergency, you can't get the, so, I don't know.
And buses are trying to pull out onto 138 from there, too. I mean, and they're sometimes lined up for a good 10, 15 minutes, because no one will stop to let them take a left, you know? I just think we need to be proactive, instead of reactive, and waiting for this to get on a meeting, you know?
So can we speak with the chief then, about, to see what?
Whatever you decide to do.
If he has.
If he can spare someone for that half, 30, 16 minutes.
Yeah, I can hear what he's gonna say, but I will ask him, for sure.
And part of this, and it's only a minor part, is educating the parents as to how they're supposed to use the parking lot and stuff. I know.
I don't know if that's minor, I mean, people are going around school buses, I'm sorry, you can't do that. You can't go around a school bus.
Yeah, some of it. But I know when I picked up my grandson, and he was doing pre-K, it's in another town, I wasn't following the rules, 'cause I didn't know what the rules were. You know, I would, you're pulling, you're supposed to go all around the parking lot and wait in line to get called to pick up your grand, your child. I would see a spot open over here, I would think I was able to park right there.
Right.
I learned pretty quick that I couldn't do that, but I, I didn't have the education, I didn't know that, I didn't know that probably all these cars were waiting here, they were probably waiting for their turn, and I was just cutting in front of them, so. Part of it, I think, the public needs, the parents need to be told.
Absolutely, but here we are.
But that's not, but that's not the total solution, that's part of the solution.
Here is my, my concern, Mr. Chairman, with asking the police chief if they can sort of spare an officer to serve as a traffic facilitator, is that that's not, that's not a solution, and I think I know what the police chief will say.
It's a temporary solution, so we can actually fix the parking lot.
That's why I think, and I support this, I'm not saying I don't, but I think it's a two-part solution, where we still need to nudge the school committee and central office into getting this on an agenda. Now, what they will say, as you know, is that they wanted this to be on an article to, to sort of fix, to use that parcel and fix the parking flow at the elementary and middle schools. It didn't happen, and then they put the solar panels in, and that further restricts the ability to sort of change around the flow of the parking lot. So I have no issue doing a, requesting that the police chief, if they can spare an officer to, to help.
For that time period.
For that time period, but I think we still need to do the long-term solution, and then this won't be so much of an issue.
And honestly, there's four weeks left of school. I'm not trying to be a thorn in everyone's side, but again, these are my kids, these are their teachers, and our educators should not be enforcing traffic laws.
Agreed.
They have to make sure our kids get on the bus and get from point A to point B in one piece. Yeah, if the parents aren't listening and abiding by that, how are they supposed to manage that? I'm not even asking that we, you know, jump to getting a police officer there now, there's four weeks left of school. I want to plan for next school year, because I know that this is not going to be better. And maybe it will get on fall meeting, or we'll wait until January. But we have to account for winter weather, all of that. And like I said, since we've had rolling drop-off, that's been wonderful. I know we can't do rolling pickup because of, you know, other issues that come along with that, but we need to get a plan in action. I know school committee doesn't meet over the summer, their last meeting will be next month, I would assume, but we need a plan.
I thought they meant.
And I'm just asking for help from you guys to do that.
They just take July off.
Okay.
My feeling is, quite frankly, I don't want to wait till the fall, if the chief can spare somebody each day. Obviously, if there are calls, and they're out on calls, there won't be an officer there. But if somebody could be there for a period of time until school closes in June, and in the meantime, we get in touch with the school committee and say, we got a meeting coming up in the fall, this, if this issue is coming up, we need to decide what's gonna happen, so that we can take it to a town meeting for funding, or if the school department's got money that can help, however. But I really think, I mean, I don't want to see anybody get hurt. And what I described in Mansfield is also because there were adults walking on the street. We aren't talking school kids. And the police have to get these pedestrians to cross the street, and so that's why they're there every day. And I'll bet, I don't think they're there 20 minutes.
Yeah, like I said, release is 3:15. We can't take our kids out of the building until 3:15. Are parents parking there? Yeah, and they're parking there illegally before that, yes. So, it would probably be.
What is the time period?
3:15 to 3:30. If they get there at 3:10 and see the people who are parking illegally, and the major safety concerns that blocking entryways, blocking exitways, then maybe, yeah. I mean, I think even a ticket should be issued for something.
I was just gonna say, what you said about informing the public, if the school can notify, however they notify parents, that there will be a police officer on duty, and parking rules and traffic rules will be enforced on school property. So if they're parking illegally, maybe they'll get a warning the first time, it won't be a warning the next time. But again, there's not only the adults and the kids, we gotta think of public safety, if we need a fire truck or an ambulance in there.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Quinn.
Is there anybody else that wishes to speak?
I'm sorry, can we just, so are we writing a letter to the school?
Yes, I was gonna make a motion if you were gonna entertain a motion.
Entertain a motion.
I make a motion that the Board of Selectmen send a letter, memorandum, to both the school committee and to central office, requesting a discussion over the importance of.
May I make a motion?
Sure, absolutely.
I'm sorry, I know you made a motion.
No, no, that's totally fine.
I would request them here, to your meeting.
Okay, yeah.
So that you can talk.
I like that, thank you.
And I think we should also have Jim and Tom, excuse me.
Sure.
The building commissioner on the highway, sorry.
I would ask the chief to be here, too.
I was superintendent and the chief to be in on the discussion, 'cause I, and I apologize for my comments, I'm just very frustrated in the fact that the Town of Dayton bought land in order to do this. The Town of Dayton's personnel has people that know what the plan should be, and the Town of Dayton is very much responsible, I think, and, and active, and trying to address problems. And that we meet the same kind of resistance you're meeting, so it's, it's frustrating that, you know, we're always putting forth. So I would say the school committee should come to your meeting here.
Okay.
And we should have all those people in place, and of course, we'll tell you when that is.
All right, thank you for interrupting.
I'm sorry, totally interrupting your motion, but.
I'm gonna rescind that half motion. Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna make a motion that we send a letter to the school committee and to central office, requesting a meeting here at Town Hall. I'll leave you, Madam Administrator, to determine when. A meeting with the school committee, central office, Board of Selectmen, building commissioner, highway superintendent, and the police of chief, police of chief, chief of police.
What are we doing here?
Backwards Mondays. Requesting a meeting to discuss the.
Safety issues.
Safety issues with the parking lot.
And friendly amendment, can we include the fire chief on that?
I was just gonna say that, yeah.
Yes.
And I'll second that.
The fire chief? The fire chief, right. Yes. Discussion.
I could probably ask them, but I was in Mrs. Dessert and Mrs. Fulon's office, meeting with them last week about this, so I don't know if we could extend the invitation to them, too, or would that be something that?
I personally wouldn't do that, I would tell Dr. Azar that we would like their present, them to be present.
And I know that they are equally frustrated as well. And again, if they're watching, they're doing a wonderful job, the staff at DES is doing a wonderful job, this is no reflection of what they're doing.
And Mr. Chairman, I agree with what Mrs. Aaronstein said. And to back it up even further, the land was bought for the parking lot to improve everything. So the town responded, the voters gave the money, okay? And that was kind of going ahead. Then the issue of the modulators came up, and the voters responded accordingly and got them in. Well, then we know the plan got put on hold, because the town was required, through the street department, to build that hard-packed, I'll call it a safety driveway. So it's not like we haven't bent over backwards, we've done everything we can, but we, we need a response.
Thank you for saying that.
We need, we need that.
Yes, I don't wanna, not that I don't mind you coming, but I don't want to, in the fall, have Mrs. Quinn have to come back here again and address this with us, so.
Well, we like you here, you know what we mean.
I understand you will, and if I was in your shoes, I'd be doing the same thing, too, but I'm just saying, I'm hoping that we have this resolved.
At least have a plan in place, with a, a, a plan on what's gonna be built, and an idea of what it's gonna cost, and, and a timetable.
Absolutely.
And hope it doesn't snow a lot.
I believe you second that motion. Any further discussion?
I did.
If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it. Any other public input? Nice to see you again, Tom, it's been a while.
Hi, Mr. Berkwin.
First time you've been here since I've been Selectman, so, but it's nice to.
That is correct.
To see you.
He made the mistake of stopping at Town Hall, and, and we, Mrs. Brady and I questioned him extensively on why he wasn't coming.
Yeah, and I saw him last CPC meeting, I think, was it last week that I saw you? Yeah.
Mr. Berkwin, is this your version of kicking the tires around on Mr. Pacheco?
I mean, that's how you want to do it.
I'm just joking. No further discussion, Mr. Chairman.
No further public input, then? And we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Good night, Cable.